Good morning. Welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to this public meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. It is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to pose a question or make comment on a matter that is before the Board today. There are copies of the agenda on the table as you come in. Just to summarize our agenda for you, and for those perhaps listening at home, so under Old Business, we have before us two requests by the Greenwich Housing Authority for municipal improvement that relate to construction of new buildings for 55 and older, as well as a second proposal for MI requests for Quarry Knoll here in town that is related to a mixture elderly affordable market. The Board of Selectmen under Town Charter is the initial step in which the town and the Housing Authority must submit in order to seek municipal improvement for any changes, alterations, disposition, acquisition of lands. This is consistent with other processes we had. I had developed during my time a procedure whereby for significant MI's, we hear them over several meetings. And why we do that is it gives the public an opportunity to become acquainted with it. It gives us an opportunity to understand what sort of the broader issues. So that will be a continuation of discussion at the last meeting. And also, once this Board does approve an MI, I think it's important to know that the planning and zoning then has a defined time period in which they would have to act. And that in itself presents challenges for applicants if, in fact, there are outstanding questions or issues that need to be addressed. My understanding, and hopefully by this point in my service on this Board, I've come to realize, we want to make sure we give a fair chance for those issues to be aired and resolved. In addition, we have a very interesting and exciting presentation from the Commission on Aging that pertains to Greenwich's designation as an age and dementia-friendly community. This is something that we all are very proud of, and we look forward to hearing that. So that's under New Business. And then, third, we have, as we often do, presentations of property tax appeals that are managed by the legal department, and those presentations are presented for settlement. And I do not believe we have any nominations or appointments today. And that basically is our meeting agenda. So just to kind of give you the quick summary. And I believe after this meeting, there's only three more meetings left of the Board, so just to give you that context. So, item two, we have minutes. I know that at our last meeting, we did not have the 22nd of August minutes, but we do today, and I entertain any corrections, amendments to those minutes. Is there any? I entertain a motion to approve? Okay, without objection. The next is for the September 11th minutes that were actually taken by Ms. Belmont during Ms. Hines' vacation period. So I thank Ms. Belmont for her help with these. I would say, I see a correction name under, it's on the second page, actually, the third page, because it's double-sided, where it talked, "Five residents voiced opposition to the plans for both sites." Also, on page four, there's a typo, it's Mr. Litvak, L-I-T-V-A-C-K. On the top, under Appointments and Nominations.
No one ever catches that.
Make sure it's, other places it's correct, let me see.
The other group down below is correct.
And I want to say, going back to the five residents, it says Francie. I think it's Francina.
Francia.
Francie?
C-I-A.
C-I-A, okay, close, they had E, so Francia Alvarez. Okay, any other corrections that you guys can find? Is there a motion to approve as amended? Okay, without objection. Quickly run through updates which have been practiced for all the meetings, and typically looking back on things that have occurred since the last meeting, and then what may be occurring. So quickly running through, there were two September 11th remembrance services held in town, one at Cosco Park, the other Glenville Fire Station, hosted by the Glenville Volunteer Fire Department. Again, want to thank those volunteers who put forward the effort to commemorate this remembrance. It's very valued and appreciated by everyone, but particularly the families who lost loved ones. On September 12th, I presided over the last police promotional ceremony at the Greenwich Police Department Headquarters. Detective Craig Zatola and James Ruzakowski Jr. were promoted to the rank of Sergeant after years of service as detectives. On September 16th, there was the annual raising of the Mexican flag in front of Town Hall to commemorate Mexican Independence Day. We were pleased to have representatives from the both federal and state delegations, as well as the Mexican government's representative in the United States with us. And it was followed by a wonderful reception with culinary delights, Mexican culinary delights in the Maza Room. Wonderful ceremony. Also, on September 17th, there was a graduation ceremony for the town's Leadership Institute. This program was instituted several years ago as part of our Whole Community First initiative focused on process improvement and customer service. This particular program provides additional training and guidance for many of the town's employees who are in supervisory roles, or are on track to advance their careers as supervisors. And it was really wonderful to see such a breadth of employees, everyone from the Nathaniel Witherell, to the Police Department, to the land use, the library. We're all here and deserve a great deal of credit for agreeing to participate, because it really helps not only them, but it helps the town. On September 20th, I had an interview with a reporter from The Economist as a result of the Think Greenwich campaign. She was out here for the Food and Wine Festival, but more particularly is looking at the community at large and what makes it an attractive destination. She was given tour of the various facilities, the schools. She met with Kim Eves, who formerly was with the Greenwich Public School District, now with Greenwich Country Day, who gave her a really strong presentation on both public and private school institutions. She was also shown the library, the hospital, and she's of British origin, and we talked a little bit about the town's early founding and the role that the British had here, which she thought was of interest, because she said, "Who is that man on the horse?" And I gave her a whole story about General Israel Putnam, which she found of interest. So that story will likely run sometime in early November, would tie into the Second Annual Greenwich Economic Forum. Another story that came out in Forbes as a result of this initiative is titled Historic Preservation, Economic Development, in Greenwich, Connecticut. They have it both ways. This was done on August 28th, and featured a number of our residents and our professional staff. Katie DeLuca, our Director of Planning and Zoning, was interviewed, and she talked about the incentives that are given to homeowners with historic homes, and efforts to continue to strengthen that. They talked to members of the Conservation Commission, Peter Malkin from the Historical Society, Chris Franco from the Greenwich Point Conservancy, as well as the Feek Farrick House. So this is all, again, part of highlighting some of the best that's taking place here in our town. Yesterday, Mr. Toner and I were at the dedication of the Monoliths at Montgomery Pineetum. These were part of a larger amphitheater that was out at an estate on Leopold. And remind me again, was it the O'Neil's?
Yes.
The O'Neil's. That was really an undertaking of B. Crumbine, who marshaled support from a member of the Board of Parks and Rec, Mr. Frank DiVincenzo, to relocate these. I would encourage anybody who wants to see some of our past on display and want a contemplative spot to just decompress, relax, to go visit the Pineetum. From what I understand, it is dog-friendly. You could walk your dog through there, is another bonus. But I just want to, again, commend them, because this really was a volunteer undertaking where they went out and sought funding to help move these very large edifices, get the landscapers involved, and I believe there were several signature donors to it. The Frances and the Whitpies were two of the primary ones amongst others. So, wonderful addition. Coming up, American Legion Post 29 is holding a fundraiser barbecue on Saturday, September 20, it says 238. Where's the? I just saw it here, barbecue. 28th.
Yeah.
At Christ Church from 1:00 to 3:00. At noon on October 1st, there will be a ceremony here at Town Hall to mark the start of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The Greenwich YWCA has been at the forefront and leading various community education awareness programs about domestic violence. Sadly, I hate to even have to say this, but it is the number-one reported crime in the town of Greenwich. So this is not something that's nice to do, it's essential we do. So that's on October 1st. On October 6th, I'm going to make a personal appeal to have folks come and join me to walk Bruce Park. For the Walk the Walk Against Domestic Violence, it's at 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in Bruce Park. Children, families, even dogs are welcome to participate in this 1.2-mile walk through Bruce Park. Walkers can join as individuals or as part of a team, and it's a $25 per person fee to enter the walk to support the program for domestic abuse services. So that's the sixth. On the 10th, there'll be a candlelight vigil and art show reception at the YWCA of Greenwich. This is really the time and the place for those who want to express their support for the victims. I think it's fair to say that this area has been inundated with news coverage of a very high-profile missing person, and I know that people have expressed an opportunity to show support for her. This would be the time to do it. October 15th, they're having a program with Professor Susan Sorenson of University of Pennsylvania, an expert in domestic violence, for a conversation with YWCA Director of Abuse Services Meredith Gold. They will discuss the contemporary social context in which domestic violence occurs, the norms that shape whether and how violence is tolerated, impacts on the entire community, and the role of firearms. Again, I would encourage any of you to come. This is a real issue in Greenwich, Connecticut, and one that we could really help with. On October 3rd, there's a ribbon-cutting for the Baileywick Road Bridge at 11:00 a.m. This bridge is one of many that this Board granted MI probably through the years. I will tell you candidly, this was not necessarily one that was met with widespread appreciation, in all candor. There was a lot of meetings I went to with residents who were not happy with the design, and frankly, and candidly, and bluntly, they're not happy with it now. So, I grew up over there, I know it well, and I'm hopeful our public works will be able to smooth the aesthetics with green. It's amazing when you put greenery in things, but not to take away from their work, that's why we do this, is to make the point that there's an ongoing program to address these. And I think you asked the question, too, how many, there were more. There's a couple more that are at the level that need rehabilitation, so. If you're interested, 11:00 a.m. One more thing, and we'll get on with the show. So, Greenwich Plaza, one of the more high-profile initiatives in our town. For those of you who don't know about it, it's property down by the Greenwich Railroad Station. Its origins in 30 seconds really began, frankly, before I was born, 1966. It was purchased, parts of the property were purchased by Ashforth's with the town. They developed the office buildings, the train station, the retail, and municipal parking. Those agreements were for 90 years. That now is 50 years into it, and there's been an ongoing issue with the uncertainty when the expiration of those air rights come to be. And that's been documented through property tax appeals over the years, in which the town has made adjustments and concessions, in which, you know, the assessor who reports the BET has been aware. We put forward our best effort to try to come up with a redevelopment agreement. It is not one that is, I would say, widely embraced by the other stakeholders. So a couple things. One, we had the workshop with the BET, many questions raised. We had the RTM presentation. I think generally, people like the idea of something happening there. So, it's an important decision, probably one of the more significant ones in our town's history. So I said on Monday night, when the BET took this up, that after having listed to the wisdom and counsel of our town administrator, and also the applicants who are interested in seeing a very constructive and meaningful dialogue, that I would not submit it to the RTM in October. And I think that makes a lot of sense. The RTM is a good part of our government, and I hope they stay involved, at least through the other processes. In addition, yesterday I received communication from Ashforth that they were looking to defer presentation to the P&amp;Z. And the reason, I believe, is twofold. One, once it was approved, it starts the 90-day process, but the P&amp;Z then is not benefiting from what's going to take place with the redevelopment agreement. In light of the fact that there's an election, and I don't know how many days, 35 days, 40 days, I am, at their request, the town administration, myself, Mr. Branyan, going to withdraw the MI proposal at this time. And I think it's a worthy project, and I'll read from the memo that Planning and Zoning will get. Upon hearing additional feedback on the redevelopment agreement, it has become clear that concerns exist over the proposed redevelopment agreement. Coupled with the decision not to refer the redevelopment agreement to the RTM in October, it makes sense to withdraw the MI referral. Therefore, with concurrence of the Greenwich Plaza, I am writing to withdraw the MI. With the upcoming election for first selectman, it would be best for the new administration to revisit the redevelopment agreement. I look forward to the planning and zoning continued thoughtful discussion on the preliminary site plan and text amendment regarding the project. The revitalization of the area and modernization of one of the major gateways to Greenwich is a significant project that will impact the town for decades to come. So, that really concludes my efforts with this. I wish the other folks luck. I'll be certainly supporting them in the town from the sidelines. But I do thank both gentlemen on this Board for their constructive feedback, and while we weren't unanimous, and I think somehow we're all coming to the same place, and that's part of the deliberative process that we have.
I just want to say, I obviously voted against the MI, as you know, and I voted against it because I felt a lack of information, financial information, that I think has to be considered. I say that as a prelude to the next statement, which is, I applaud your decision. I think that was wise. I think it shows the kind of judgment that I expect and has come to see from you, and I think that's the right thing to do. Give the process time to play itself out. Give the process time to get the facts. In all these things, I believe, and when we face MI proposals, and I know we're not facing the housing proposal now, I believe the key thing for this Board is to get the facts. And that's what we really must try to do in every case. So I applaud your decision.
Thank you, thank you. So that concludes the updates, and again, I read basically what the memo is to P&amp;Z, and this was also in concurrence with them as well, because, again, it starts the clock. They are still going to have their meeting, I believe, tonight, that looks at those changes. They themselves have very specific ideas on what they'd like to see. I don't want to speak for them, but they may want to go beyond what was presented. That's their judgment and discretion. So, that will continue. I know that the town administrator will be working with whomever is elected in November. In the meantime, I think that, I would say, that the project is really on hiatus until a new administration is constituted. And I would say on hiatus from the Selectmen BET RTM, that other piece, we don't tell P&amp;Z what to do, they're dealing with that. So, at our last meeting, we had the initial presentation from the Greenwich Housing Authority for municipal improvement for Armstrong Court, to construct a new building with approximately 50 elderly, 55 and older units, consisting of market rate units, with up to 10 units being affordable in a single building to be located near the property from Booth Place. In addition, we've had requests pertaining to Quarry Knoll 1. The property is currently improved with 50 units on about seven acres of land. The proposal states these 50 units would be replaced between 175 to 225 units, consisting of a mixture of elderly, affordable, and market rate units. Since that meeting, we had questions at our Board meeting, which you did provide us a memo last evening pertaining to some of them that were asked then, so in fairness, you did respond to those. In addition, having had my opportunity to talk with Ms. DeLuca about their, the Planning Department's view of an affordable housing, she submitted to me some suggested questions that would be beneficial for all of us to have an understanding of. I just shared those with you today, in fairness. So, I don't want to pre, what's the word? Preempt the other discussion, but I think based upon this, I think I'm not in a position to vote on this today. I just want to reaffirm, though, that I do support what you have been doing in terms of modernizing our affordable housing, engaging with Commission on Aging, engaging with P&amp;Z. In no way is the non-action today meant to signal some punitive statement. It's just a sense that we really would like to see a more comprehensive sense of where we are with affordable housing in Greenwich overall. We are not the only community that is challenged by the Affordable Housing Statute. I know the Planning Commission has been thoughtfully and carefully looking at ways they could help meet the requirements that, or at least get closer to that goal. And I think that's one of the primary reasons why they want to perhaps hit the pause here and understand, like, where are we from a starting point? What do we have? What is it designated of? What are the income requirements? I recognize that some of that is out there, but I think from a holistic point of view, if I were to walk in, brand-new, to the town of Greenwich, I would not know where to find that or locate that. So I think that's really underlying some of this, and I shared them with you. I don't know if I need to really read through them all. I just think that we're trying to, again, we were acknowledged as being sort of the visionary group, the concept. I think we still believe that, but we want to know a little bit more detail.
Goes back to what I said last time. I say it again, facts, you know, they're stubborn things.
Just the facts. Just to, by way of starting, again, my name is Attorney Christopher Bristol, representing the Housing Authority with the pending MI request. Yeah, at the last meeting, we came up with the initial presentation, again, presenting the request for MI approval for both redevelopment of Quarry Knoll 1 site and for the construction of a senior housing building on the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast corner of Armstrong Court. Again, just to be clear, and I think you acknowledged this, Mr. Toner, before, was that this is in the conceptual stage. We have just thought long and hard about what's best to do, and there's many reasons for doing what we're doing, for leveraging the assets of the Greenwich Housing Authority to increase the stock of affordable and senior housing units that are available in the fashion that we're doing it. Now, this is the first step, again, in the long road toward, hopefully, an ultimate approval. This is a conceptual stage, and after, you know, if we were able to secure the MI approvals for these, then we would start going full bore, if you will, on engaging consultants and having reports done and plans prepared, et cetera, in order to finalize the details about the next step, which would be the submission to the planning and zoning commission for whatever approvals are necessary for each of those respective projects. I know, just by way of information, we do have Tony Johnson from the Greenwich Housing Authority is here, and there is a representative from the Commission on Aging, who may or may not want to speak a little bit on this application. I know they're here for another presentation shortly after this, but I know the Commission on Aging has endorsed the increase of senior housing availability in town, and that's something that, again, we feel is, works very, very well with Greenwich Housing Authority land assets that we have to redevelop. I did submit to you, as you mentioned, a memo, just sort of outlining a few of the questions that I think came in, sort of generally by email initially, and then a couple of things that we talked about at the meeting. A lot of this stuff is what we talked about before. I didn't know if you had any questions about the contents of that memo. It's sort of a summary fashion and an amalgamation of perhaps responses that we made at the first meeting. So I'm happy to go through those types of comments or questions, if you will, or we can turn it over to Tony Johnson, who wants to, you know, say a few words and respond to some of Katie DeLuca's questions, et cetera.
I have, just having seen this, I have not read what you wrote, but I do have one question, just a follow-up, and it is, yes? just a follow-up, and it is a yes or no question. Is there or are there pro-formers regarding this?
Well, I'll let Mr. Johnson answer that question, but I guess...
It's the same question I asked.
Is there anything, only because I know that Tony is going to answer some of the questions from Mrs. DeLuca as well, so if there's anything else, sort of development or process-related or zoning-related, any of those types of things that I can help you with while I'm up, otherwise I'll turn it over.
Sure. I would take a step back and help educate the public on the fact that the town, through its representative town meeting, designated the Greenwich Housing Authority as the Development Authority for Affordable Housing in the town. I think that's a very significant action that was taken.
Right.
And that, to me, really is the point of departure for future discussions. It's been in existence for 30 years, and I think many people may not even know that, because you're not really part of the Town of Greenwich Government. You operate independent with the connection being this board appointing the commissioners. So, I think that, to me, needs to be discussed in terms of what you've done with that authority through the years. You've touched on a number of these things, and I did find even in my files, as I've been reviewing, specifically the senior housing, you know, spectrum of senior housing in Greenwich. And this document goes back to July of 2009, but I think what your role has been as the Development Authority, to be clean. And then, two, being able to show us, but the community, the number of units we have, because the state has an Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure list, and it talks about the number of housing units which are exempt under 830G, which are assisted units, CHAF mortgages, deed restricted, and then it looks at total assisted, and then what is that percent? I think we're trying to, through Ms. DeLuca, be able to pinpoint, if there are three CHAF, well, where are they? So, that would be, like, the two points, role as Development Authority, then what do we have as a base? And then, I would say, how is this going to help us, get us closer to that, and does it align with where the PNC is going? And in fairness to you, and I will say this, you have been following the directives of the 2009 POCD. I don't dispute that. I think there's a change in thinking with the 2019, or it's probably going to be 2020 now. And that, I think, is why it's opportune in many ways to hit the pause, because we have over a decade of experience, and also knowing that things are changing around us. So...
I know that, from experience in dealing with many private development, sort of a moderate, affordable income projects, ones that utilize 830G or ones that brush up against 830G or et cetera, it's not intuitive, and it's common, I don't want to say misunderstood, commonly misunderstood, but it's uncommonly understood. You know, it's not very intuitive, and it's sort of hard to grasp. I know that it's a sort of a topic of discussion that we often have with PNC and with residents and neighbors and everyone else, and even people within various departments of the town that don't interact necessarily with the Housing Authority. So, it is actually information that Tony Johnson will be able to speak about, and we're going to invite him up to do that now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bristol.
Get out of your way. Good morning.
Good morning, Tom.
Thanks. Yeah, actually, Peter, it's very interesting, because of the 5% of the state requirement for affordable housing that the town has, the goal is 10%. 90% of the 5% belongs to the Housing Authority. We provide the affordable housing in the Town of Greenwich. No one else does. The other thing that's very interesting is, over the years, I've had, members of the RTM have told me over the years that the Housing Authority was designated at one point as the Housing Development Agency for the Town of Greenwich. I never could find out what that meant. I could never find it anywhere in the minutes. But I was meeting with you, and you actually had found a document that finally designated the Housing Authority as the Housing Development Authority of the Town of Greenwich. What that does, it enacts a state statute that allows the Housing Authority to plan on behalf of the Town of Greenwich for housing. It's not just housing. It allows the Housing Authority to do commercial development if they feel the need or necessity to do it. It allows the Housing Authority to do non-affordable housing. It allows the Housing to do anything that would improve the overall town substantially from a standpoint of blight or low-income housing that would be able to fulfill a deficit that the town would have. So, going backwards, I've been here a few years now, and I can tell you that I came in with an aggressive plan years ago, where we were going to do quite a few units that we planned to do. And basically, we were shut down through the town processes. We weren't allowed to do it, which would have gone a long way toward planning and zoning, not having the same issues that they're having with private developers today in enacting 830G. If we had been allowed to move forward, in my opinion, those developments would have gone a long way toward improving and enhancing the number of units that were available to the town. There's a couple of questions on here that I find interesting. One thing is on the reuse of our existing land, for example, where there's a state property involved, like Armstrong Court, or like Adams Garden, which we redeveloped with 13 new units there. They were originally financed with the state through a mortgage from this government, from the state government. In most parts, those mortgages have been paid off. Housing Authority owns the property. But what we have is continuing agreement that all of those units would be, including all the land, would stay affordable, right, for 40 years initially, and then forever, actually, once you sign a mortgage with CHAF or with the state. So, when we go to redevelop a part of our property, including Armstrong Court, the new units that we just put there, or the senior building that we will put there, we actually have to get those parcels of land, even though we own it, released from the Department of Housing. They actually have to release that land to us for our development rights, so that we can develop that land. And generally, that requires us to agree to keep the units affordable. So, with that, anything and everything that the Housing Authority has done, according to the state, is counted toward affordable housing, if that helps you, because that's our mission. Our mission is not to be in a developer's space, but it is to develop affordable housing. What that means, it's the gamut of affordable housing. It's from people who are on low income, and it's people who are senior citizens retiring that may have assets but may not be, you know, on an annual basis cash-rich. So, that's our mission, and that's what we do. Now, with that, if you have some questions... Oh, yeah, let me give you another thing. We want to talk about what we've done and what we have to do. Over a year and a half ago, you actually approved the MI for McKinney Terrace for 50 units of senior housing. Well, we actually are going to bring that plan forward. It's low-income senior housing, by the way, because we have a method to be able to pay for that low-income senior housing. We're going to bring that to planning and zoning soon to start that process. So, by no means is this granting of an MI an immediate go sign to go directly to development. It doesn't work that way. Another example, we just went out to bid on rehabilitation of the third building at Armstrong Court. A year ago, we priced that building, the rehab of the building, at, let's say, $10 million. We actually took it out to bid recently, and the bid came back at $12.5 million. So, when someone asks you, what's the numbers? I can't really give you the number. I can tell you what we think it's going to be. I can't tell you what the market is saying it's going to be, because it's all based on market conditions at the time that we go to bid. We have to figure out how we're going to pay the difference between what we started with and what we're ending up with. We have to re-engineer our product or do whatever we have to do to make it work, but there's work to be done, because the number didn't come in under, it came in over, which in most cases it does in construction, especially in a vibrant economy like the one we have today. And even in Greenwich, Connecticut, where you're building on rock, which is another substantiation. So, when someone says, what does something cost? I can guess. I don't want to guess. That's not very good business. I don't think we go around guessing it, what we want things to be, until we actually design it and price it. And even a guesstimate is not even, you don't want to put that out there, because people want to hold you to it, right? And I don't want to be held to something that I can't bring through. If I can substantiate it, I'll give it to you. I have nothing to withhold, because that's not our business. So, with that, if you have questions, I'm willing to answer, and we will address all the questions and write.
Just repeat again for me, I'm sorry, you said the 10 to 12 million, which building is that? It's the proposed...
It's actually the longer building at Armstrong Court. So, it's not the still building, so you have the still. So, the next phase is the longer building, which has 42 units in it. And that's a gut rehab of that existing building. And so, as I said, we're going out to bid on these things, and prices are not where they were a year ago, when we were going through our pricing, you know, of the buildings.
Just out of curiosity, what is the completion date for the new units? They look nice, very complimentary and laudatory about it.
Yeah, we're hoping to get those open and occupied by the first quarter of 2020. But they're moving along very well. And again, that's another one of the things that we do. Even though, you know, you have a question here on affordable units, where we have market rate, quote-unquote, what people believe to be market rate units that we manage. Are the buildings, are the units the same? Yes, the units are exactly the same. Yes, the appliances are all the same. The only space differences, the difference between a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit and a three-bedroom unit. There is no differentiation between apartments based on the income of the person that's in the apartment.
Thank you. Again, I think that, courtesy of Ms. DeLuca, whom could not be with us today, she's given us good context for many of the questions we had. So, my request would be if you could do similar, what you did for the ones we had, perhaps create a singular document? And any other questions that Mr. Littback or Mr. Toner have, that would be helpful to us as we try to make a fact-based, productive decision.
Absolutely. We can do that for you, and we'll get it to you, you know, ASAP. Only question, and we talked about what we can do to enhance and improve affordable housing in the Town of Greenwich, is to make it easier for us to get through a process, you know? Not just this process, but the process of planning and zoning. We've spent so much money going through the development process that it's much higher. In addition to the sources of funding that we use, because in some cases it's state funded, there's already a premium on those dollars because of the whole process that you actually have to go through. So, when you're going through a process that requires you to, you know, do things three, four times over again, you're spending a lot of money, wasting a lot of time, that you don't have. I mean, it's not a private development. We're not going to go out and charge rents based on what the market could bear. That's not the way it works. The way it works is, our case, for the new units, those units has a designated income, and it's all, that's particular, those bills are set by the government from a tax credit standpoint. We don't set them, they're already established.
You raise a point, which in my mind is an excellent point. It has nothing to do with your particular problem, per se, I don't think, and it's nothing I don't think this board could deal with. But you sit here and you say to yourself, if you're new to the board, as I still am, and defer to my seniors over here, you say to yourself, what is this process? What are we doing? We are, quote, approving a municipal improvement. How much is it going to cost? No idea. What's it going to look like? Don't know. What's it going to be? Up to PNC, up to this agency, up to that board. What are we doing? This is not a question for you, it's a rhetorical question.
But I could answer.
It's a rhetorical question, but I think it is a question that the town ought to think about. What standard are we applying when we give municipal approval? What is it we are saying? Is it just simply, we like the idea of affordable housing, go build it somewhere? Is that what we're saying? What are we saying? What are we approving? I don't mean specifically.
Don't know how to answer.
And so, I sit here asking questions, which you think are somewhat either unanswerable or maybe more honestly impertinent.
Honestly, early in the process.
Yeah, but, you know, we talked about this publicly. I have a different background. I know that there are pro-formers. I know that you're not bound by them, but I know that you do them. I know you don't want to give them to me. I understand, but I do want to see them, in any event. All of that is so, but it really gets into the process. So, you put your finger on something, I think, that is valuable. Yes, we spent a lot of time, and you spent a lot of money, going through a process that you're wondering about, kind of, why is it so cumbersome? And I guess I join you in wondering why it's so cumbersome, and wonder what role we really play here, and whether someone shouldn't be looking at the whole question. Just my statement.
Well, just, part of that question I can answer, the part of it that relates to transactional business, I don't know, I can't answer that. But we actually do bring you a building. We brought buildings, in every case, what the buildings will look like. So, we have designed the building. And the difference is, is that we designed the building, we gave you a picture of the building, and that's what we always do. But the difference is, the next standpoint, which is what we're doing differently this time than we did years ago, was we went to the complete design process. We went to the site plan, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on the site plan, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on architectural design and building, electrical, and we brought a complete building to you, to be denied. And so, the difference today is, I'm coming to you with the concept of a building before I go out and sink $800,000 into a design.
Fully understand.
Okay.
I mean, no one understands more than I do that you don't want to spend money when you don't know that you're going to get approved. That's why I'm questioning the whole process and what we're doing here.
Do you have anything to say?
Not really. I agree with Sandy. The MI process has always been kind of a question mark in my mind.
It's what we have.
It's what we have, exactly.
Oh, no, I'm not changing it today. It is what we have.
Yeah.
I'm sort of just discussing with you the enigma that we face, that I think we face.
But I think, though, if you look at the MI's that you've granted us over the past, first of all, unlike other town agencies that you do, you're the backstop for any issue. You, the town, are the backstop for any financial losses at the school board, or whether we're all, or wherever you want to go. We're not the backstop for the housing, right? We don't come to you, the town, for bail-out. Everything we do has to stand alone, has to work. It doesn't? We got issues. So, from that standpoint, I think that's a little different. And you should have control of what we're doing and what you want to see, and that we work together and try to build buildings and apartments and housing from that standpoint. But the difference of it is, is that there's no skin in the game from a financial standpoint of the town. So...
No, but as fiduciaries and as elected officials, we have lots of skin in the game.
And we respect that.
Yeah.
We respect that.
I know you do.
Yeah.
I know you do.
I would, again, concur what everybody's saying. There's no question it's a cumbersome process. It's one that I don't think is unique to Greenwich. I mean, in terms of other municipalities having MI, it is regularly a challenge, I think, even for the sequence with the town projects. I think what makes this more so is that, you know, it's multiple projects, and you're developing, you know, we usually have a project for a building, we have the existing building, what does the new one cost? This one gets into, these buildings are providing housing to people, what are those levels? You know, it's far more dense in that regard. So, I think our goal, and I think I can speak for our board, is we're really trying to be helpful to you by getting these out now, so that once you're able to address them... So that once you're able to address them, we can make the best informed decision and then you have a cleaner path going to planning and zoning, you know, getting before our TM and that you don't spend money in advance. I think that's really my objective, is to try to help you through this process rather than saying, look, I love the concept, and I will say right now, I love the concept, as we're going to hear from the commission, I love what they're doing. But I think it would be better for all of us if we were able to help you articulate how that ties into the broader.
Again, we have no issue doing it. We just want to be clear on what the questions are.
Right. And again, I think Ms. DeLuca helped us in that regard because she has a focus on this in, actually, I don't know if many people realize that there is a staff person who's been designated as the housing specialist within planning and zoning because this is a significant a part of what they do as the town's land use agency. So I, I think they're trying to raise the standard as a way, and, and I know, you know, that whole accounting for those units is really what they want to put out there so that they're confident when we say to the state of Connecticut, these are our, quote unquote, affordable units based upon this designation, this designation, this designation. I think that's what she's saying, that's how I interpret it.
I have no issue with that. I mean, we actually work with planning and zoning every year on actually that same process. Again, as I said, we're ninety percent of the numbers. So we'd like to be more of that number. We, we want to help the town, for example, not have to fight the development process with developers because they're using that wedge in town to do things that they want to do. If we were providing that, which is what we've been obligated to do and our, and our mission is to, to provide those units of affordable housing to get us closer to that goal, then that's what we're trying to do. And that's all we're trying to do, right? We're not-
I think we share the same goals, I really do. I think everybody's sharing the same goal, it's just how it's identified and explained and understood. I really do. I, I don't really see a disagreement, it's just wanting to be able to factually dock what is and, and where it's going. So I think this has been actually constructive today, one of the more constructive conversations because it's purposeful. Everybody's trying to get to the same place.
No, I'm happy with that, no issue. We will address the questions ASAP.
Okay.
I will actually, you know, share with Sandy whatever my thoughts are on the pro-former and, you know, it's, you have to understand that it's, it's early, right?
I think you know I understand all too well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know you do.
Thank you.
Correct. And, and that's the problem, we're giving things to people who know, you know, what they know.
Always a problem giving something to somebody who thinks they know.
Absolutely. It's, it's, that's always a problem. So you, you try to avoid that if you can. If you can't, then you go along with it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Barbara, the date of the next meeting is when?
October ten.
October ten, okay. So I don't know if you really have any comment, I don't want to just move on. You've came today, you've heard. I will just acknowledge, thank you for sending us this regulation that was really-
Can I speak?
To that point, I mean, I think, you think, you know, as you know, it's still open and unless you have any other questions that you want us to get answered to specific to the concept, I mean, as I said earlier, I don't think we're going to get into the dimensions and all that, that's really beyond our scope. We're more at, how does this tie into the broader picture, the affordability question? There's different designations, I think, Ms. Von Brockel, you raised some of those constructively before. So I, so if you have any more, let us know, I think that was helpful. We have, how many days? October ten, so ten plus, or the twenties?
Today, we're-
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? So we'll see. I mean, you're welcome, I was, we were going to hear from the commission on their-
Will you be able to speak again in two weeks?
Yeah.
So October twentieth, that's who said?
October ten.
October ten.
October ten.
Ms. Raymer?
Yeah, I was hoping to speak this morning about the housing authority applications, but if you are not providing an opportunity for us to speak, that's-
Well, let me be clear, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with your words. Not, I am providing an opportunity for you to speak. I'm saying, what are you, you have to speak about something relevant to what's on the agenda. Right now, the, the requests are for municipal improvement. What I think you just heard is, we have questions about the definition of the projects in terms of their affordability, how they apply to the various regulations for affordability. And we don't know the answers that we're going to get that from them. But if you have something else you'd like to add to that, that we can get answers to, I'd be happy to welcome them, having, having supported your appointment to the planning and zoning and you're admirer of your service. So if it's related to that, I would appreciate it. But if it's, if, to be quaint, if it's an oratory about the housing authority, it doesn't really help me. I'm, I'm more interested in relation to the specific proposals that are before us.
I, I hope that what I was intending to say is specific to this.
Okay, then, welcome. I'm, I'm very liberal when it comes to letting people speak. I don't think anybody could say otherwise. So please.
Thank you. I agree with you.
Yeah.
I'm Nancy Raymer.
Could you speak in further, my friend?
Thank you.
I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for five and a half years and I'm a retired attorney of forty-plus years' experience. I first want to thank you very much for really giving this a lot of thought because I, I think that's commendable and we, the citizens, rely on you doing that. And I, for one, very much appreciate the fact that you're doing that. I wanted to just take this back to basics. The housing authorities, authority rests with the state of Connecticut statutes and they are section eight forty to eight forty-four. And it's, everything about it is governed, as are all the housing authorities in the state of Connecticut, by those state statutes. So it's a statutory entity, it does not operate independent of that. And our RTM's approval of that is pursuant to section eight forty to eight forty-four. And our housing authority is certainly an essential of this town's housing for people who are low and moderate income people, using the state's statutory language. So that is what the purview of the housing authority is. That is their power. And that power is just that. It is not to provide housing for people who they think need housing. It is for those moderate and low-income people. And they are, are regulated by the state, they are regulated by HUD, but their authority comes from those sections and from no other source. I wanted to focus on the simple fact that we don't have anywhere near, aside from the affordable house, excuse me, thirty-G affordable housing, we factually in this town, as evidenced regularly by the United Way, do not have anything like enough housing for the low and moderate income people in this community. I want to focus particularly on facts. Hamilton Avenue School, where I volunteer, children expressed me things like, the boy who lives in one room with his father, he has nobody with him, his father works from the beginning of the day till bedtime. That's the life of one little boy in our public school who lives here. A second child, her best days are at school. She doesn't like the weekend because her mom works all the time. They have no transportation and she is the caregiver for her three-year-old brother. We have, at Hamilton Avenue, more than forty percent of the children are on the, the food program, which provides them free breakfast and free lunch. And that's because they don't eat otherwise. We have neighbor-to-neighbor in this community, six-hundred-plus families get their food from there and they don't get by without that food. This is our community. It's not the visible community, but it's a really large and important part and the part that we should be helping. So until we've gotten all those people taken care of, the idea of our housing authority extending itself to some other territory seems a, a non-starter. It seems completely unjustified. There were small matters raised at the last meeting that I, I did not attend to because I had just come back. The, the banks, I believe, in the state of Connecticut are mandated to provide financing as a part of their annual reporting process, to provide financing for the housing authority and similar entities. So there is, there is authority there to make them provide that financing. The RAP program that was raised at the last meeting, that program, I simply went to the HUD website because I knew nothing about it. And according to HUD, that is a state rental lounge program to provide, to provide temporary rental assistance to families and individuals who are homeless or experiencing critical or emergency housing needs. All of these things address the people in this community who are below the poverty line or at the poverty line. Those are the people the housing authority needs to continue to help. I, I also would simply say, the volun, there has been tremendous volunteer effort in this town to address this. The most recent, under the auspices of our first selectmen, has been the, the committee which drafted and got passed under the leadership of Ellen, excuse me, it's Mary Ellen Levine, the, the revised moderate income housing statute, which, which seeks to address pieces of this problem. It's a serious problem and I hope that the housing authority will continue to address it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm starting to get a little-
Short term.
It's not a debate. I just wanted, I, I think you said something about RAD, did you mention RAD or RAD?
I, I had it down initially as RAD in the first meeting, but I thought I heard RAP.
Yeah.
I thought I heard today RAP.
Yeah, there's no-
Well, can you, for, for, for laypeople like us, can you just go through what that stands for?
That's part of the problem with having this discussion, it's a very complicated subject.
So residents-
RAD is a rental assistance demonstration program run by HUD. It's not a state program, it's a federal program.
Assistance.
And what it is, is an optional program, but encouraged program from the federal government that's encouraging housing authorities to migrate from their public housing guaranteed funding scenario from the office of public housing at HUD into a different model where the housing authorities will be able to privatize and go out, for example, and borrow monies to improve their properties. Currently, when you're on, when you're in a public housing program, we'll repack, we can't go out and borrow monies in an emergency to fix up the building. We, we can't do it. It's not allowed. You can't take a lien on a building like that. Once you take that building out of that program and you put it into a RAD program, then you are allowed to do that. So that also allowed rents to fluctuate a little differently than they do in the public housing program over time, not immediately, but over time it does. So it's two different programs. It's not, it's not a state program. State runs their own programs. It has nothing to do with that. And it, and it's a federal, and it has nothing to do with any developments, by the way, that we actually are talking about and we're asking for a MI on. So I, I don't know, that's a philosophical conversation about housing authorities. At some point in the future, I'll be happy to have with anyone, but it has nothing to do with the requests that we're making before you today.
I, I thought I understood, makes no difference since it has nothing to do with this particular request, that you had actually looked at the RAD program and decided that you, the housing authority, would end up with less money if you opted into that than if you stayed where you are in terms of the federal. Is that right or wrong?
Yes. What's happened is that if you stay in the existing federal programs, they are cutting the funding. So even though, when you go through a formula calculation every year and the delta between your operating expenses and your rent revenue is usually filled by HUD, it costs subsidy. Well, that subsidy is a hundred percent when calculated, but when paid out, it's eighty, seventy-five, it depends on what the federal government allocates to you. So therefore, if you're only allocating seventy-five percent of the hundred percent that you need, obviously, we all can count math, you're losing money, right? In your properties. So they're looking to not be completely responsible for the financial health of the public housing portfolio across the country, not Greenwich, Connecticut, but across the country. So they're looking for people and housing authorities to migrate to a different model that would allow borrowing, just like any other building, you know, that is operated.
But, but my point was, but, and you looked at that and it would not be in your judgment to Greenwich's advantage to make that switch.
Well, not overall. I mean, we actually are considering a program, a small program of RAD on a couple of our buildings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we are. I mean, we have to because it just makes sense. We have a long-term strategy and I'd love to talk to you about it. It's, it's a much deeper strategy than, you know, the RAD program. Because that's the, that's the other thing, let me get this out of there. Housing Authority of Town of Greenwich doesn't just do low-income public housing. Low-income public housing is thirty percent of our portfolio. People probably don't even know that. It's not. State housing is not, quote unquote, low-income public housing. It's moderate income housing. It's not low-income housing. So I, I think there's this definition of language that housing authorities across the country are all the same, right? We went Parsons Cottage, that's not a low-income public housing development, it's not a state development. It's a, it's an assisted living facility that we run. We have multifamily development, which is a totally different animal than all three of them. So really, it's a very complicated, you know, conversation. And I would love to actually educate you all on it at some point because it, it's a range of housing options. So I, I like to say this for what we do in the Town of Greenwich, as the housing authority, for the housing people that we do house. They come in as a family, in a three-bedroom, we move them to a two-bedroom, we move them to a senior citizen facility of our own, and then at some point, if necessary, they get a place at Parsons Cottage. We provide the gamut of housing. That's what we're continually trying to do. And I think that has never been known, but if you think about it, if you think about people you've known in town, I know, Peter, you know the process, where they, how they migrated through, all the families. And, and so that's what we do. And it's not just low-income public housing. That's all that's in the facts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fortunato?
Sorry, I do want to speak. I just want to look back to a few things. Good morning. I think we, I'm glad you guys are pumping the brakes and doing due diligence. I think that it's very important. I think, what I want to remind you is that our white-collar town was built on, with the hands of blue-collar workers. You have, we had the Russell, Burtzle, Ward, Nut and Bolt Company, the American Fell Company, Schaefer Pencil Company, Iron Works, it was Greenwich Iron Works, which is now Post Road Iron Works, the Abingroth Brothers Eagle Factory by the Barham River, Myenas Manufacturing, George Merks and Sons Factory. That's a lot of contaminants. And, you know, we're, we're just, we're not hearing anything about the environment. And, you know, as you are aware, the last time this didn't pass, one of the reasons was because this was a really sensitive area and the housing authority was told to, you know, tread very lightly. These companies all were probably making daily runs to the dump and the stuff was going through the environment once it went up through the stacks. So I don't want you to be dismissive of the, you know, the health and, and safety matter. Clearly, the incinerator didn't skip anyone in this town and the, just the people that reside closer got the brunt of it. You know, the residents behind Hemlock were successful to have units on the Post Road turned down by PNZ to save a few salamanders swimming in a verne pool in an industrial use area with proven contaminants. Why do we need to go through this again, being that we are but the dingy, dirty dump? It clearly defies logic. Mr. Johnson was quoted in, in the paper in two thousand and nine in an article- Mr. Johnson was quoted in, in the paper in 2009, in an article published by the Greenwich Times. They were doing an article about the grant he had received for his MBA he earned at Pace. And he said, "People in the past have thought the housing authority, have thought of the housing authority as a nonprofit. Really, we're a financial organization that handles real estate." So really, realistically, what is, what is the goal here? Is the project about green? Or do we want to save green space? Low-income housing? Is it moderate-income housing? Because it seems to me it's about profit. And we're going to lose the characteristics of our neighborhood, which, you know, this stuff is all outlined in the new POCD that's coming out, you know, and these, all of this 830G coming in. And it's just, I mean, we're over, we're bursting at the seams where we are. I mean, how much more? How, how much more in Chico Hominy? How much more can we take over there? We're flooding. We have traffic issues. You have the construction going on in 287, so when that backs up, everybody's coming through our neighborhood. You can't go anywhere. It takes you 45 minutes to go from exit two to four. I mean, it's just, it's like a city now. It's like living in Stanford. You can't go anywhere. So how much more, how much more build-out? But what is our neighborhood going to, you're going to change all of the characteristics by this coming in here. The kids won't be able to ride their bikes. We have people that have lived there all their lives that are starting to move out of the neighborhood. New people are coming in with children. I mean, have any of you even walked the neighborhood?
Actually, I have. My roots are very deep there. Yeah, my roots are very deep there. I just spent
I mean, did you see all of the?
Months moving my aunt to Nathaniel Woodrow. I was in the neighborhood. We had tag sales. I had people who live in many of those units come. So with all due respect, and I really genuinely like you as an individual, and I think you're a great representative for your neighborhood, what I don't necessarily embrace is the, the inference about contaminants. If there is in fact contaminants, then we need to be able to prove it.
I'll send it to you.
I know that some of what you're quoting from, I would bet my last dime, is coming from Mr. Finkbeiner, who was here last meeting.
No, we have the report.
Mr. Finkbeiner, well, who, where do they originate from? I'd love to get the
They were FOI'd. I FOI'd them from the housing authority.
In, in the last reports I read, so that they did not have any contaminants on their property. So I think this has been a politically-charged issue.
No, 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 no.
I'm not speaking specifically to you now, that unfortunately gets away from the science in place to the emotion. I don't think there's anybody in this town who, if they knew there were contaminants, wouldn't want to address it. That goes from the Commissioner of Public Works, through anyone who's served on this board. But it has to be based on fact. And I think where I was going to go in concluding this is that what I, what I enjoyed up until this point was a really productive conversation while not agreeing, I think respecting that everybody has a responsibility. Everybody has a strong desire to see housing here. I don't think anybody's saying we don't want any housing per se.
I think the building's beautiful, and I think that they did a nice job.
I hear what you're, right.
This is not the location for it.
And I think that's something we certainly appreciate hearing, but I do think that then ties into planning and zoning and what they said. Because in the existing plan, they did say to the housing authority, "Look at your existing properties to build." So I don't think it's fair to necessarily pound on them when they're taking the current plan that's in effect in trying to implement it. Now, the new plan may say, "Don't do that." I think Ms. Raymer raised very valid points as to who are we really serving? Are we serving the most needy? And then that begs the question, well, where are you going to build the housing for the most needy? Is it going to be close to rail and bus? I mean, Ms. Von Brocco, you raised those very points. So then what is that going to do to the populations at the schools? So there, there's a lot of
This is also in Census Track 105. I don't know if you're aware of that.
So they're not, it's not that they're not legitimate, but I think just kind of throwing it up against the wall in, in generating sort of the, well, I'll use the word hostility between the community, the housing, it never gets us anywhere. I think we need to take a more holistic approach. I think this board is trying to do that. I think everyone here sincerely wants to support housing and not infringe upon people. But we need to do it in a very deliberative way. And I think our action today is, "Look, we're not going to move forward. We want to get answers on the role and responsibilities. Where are we starting from? What are the state, Ms. Raymer, your points are good. What are the state authorities granted to them? How does it work through the town process? Is this in line with what planning is proposing under the new, new POCD? And should it be in your area? I mean, you're, I'm not saying that's not legit. I'm just saying, I don't think, I don't believe they have contamination based upon what they showed me.
I'd be more than happy to send you the report, that it shows that where they are putting this building is polluted site-wide. I'll be more than happy.
Okay.
If I did not have it in black and white, I would not get up here and say. I, I read and I do due diligence. I've been studying this area since my son had lead poisoning. I know a lot about a lot of what went on in this town. And I think it would raise a lot of eyebrows. This area, without a doubt. I mean, there's lead in my, in my front yard when the Health Department came out after my kid got lead poisoning. It was all tested. So I know it's here.
I'm not going to debate that here, but I think legitimate point
I will send, I will send you the report. I will send the
Yeah, I think, again, to make the jump that it's from them, it's, or, I don't know. I think it gets beyond the scope of what's
There's a lot of issues here with the whole scope of the project.
And we're not an environmental body.
Putting them down for, you know, wanting to help people. I mean, over, from 1975 to date, the housing authority has gotten $75 million in community development progress that were supposed to go to blighted areas. So I'm glad that we're actually making the effort to do that and to improve the health and safety for the people that live in housing. I think we should have been doing it a long time ago. Thank you.
I, I just think by way of, at least to me, by way of summary of where we stand, it comes back to something I've been talking about throughout. It's important that we have the facts. You've raised issues. They are legitimate issues, whether it's the environment, whether it's the basic purpose of the housing authority and what they should be doing. Whatever it may be, we need the facts. And if you have facts, give them to us. I think the one thing that you fairly, or anyone sitting here or watching fairly would say is, "This board is trying, trying to get to the right decision and to have the facts that will enable us to do so." So, you know, give it to us. Jackson will have an opportunity to respond, and we will make the best decision we can, as I think the first selectman said. Our goal is to try to do the right thing. Housing for low-cost people, housing for seniors are all good things which we'd like. The question is, how do we go about it, and where are they located? We're trying to deal with that.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, thank you for your interest in coming. Thank you to the housing authority. Now we'll move to new business, the Greenwich House, Greenwich Commission on Aging, Director Lori Contadino and Commission Member Steve, Stephen Katz.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity.
You're clearing the house out.
I know. Something I've said. So for, for those that are present, and perhaps for those that may tune in later, I am Lori Contadino, Director of the Greenwich Commission on Aging, and with me is Mr. Stephen Katz, who is the Vice Chair of the Commission Board. I, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you today the Age and Dementia-Friendly Greenwich Action Plan, for which we seek both your feedback and your approval. To give you a quick summary of what the Commission on Aging has been invested in over the past three years. It was December of 2016 that we received the official endorsement of this board to apply to become a member of the network of AARP and the World Health Organization Liveable Communities Network. Since that time, the Commission on Aging, in cooperation with Columbia University Mailman School of Public Health Consulting Work Group, has been engaged in a rigorous, multi-phased process, working toward the creation of the action plan that we've submitted to you for review today. The plan is a synthesis of data derived from a variety of sources. The resident survey, which we received a robust response of over 1,800 completed surveys, individuals age 45 to 101. Fifty-two individuals have participated in five listening sessions, a community conversation led by our AARP National Representative, Bill Armbruster, here in Greenwich, of which over 120 residents attended. And from discussions that we've held with P. department heads and invested community stakeholders. The Advisory Board was created in 2017, and the Advisory Board represents a wide cross-section, not only of department heads, so internal and external stakeholders, but also older adults and individuals with a diagnosis of dementia and their care partners. The Advisory Board formed subcommittees and examined the results of all of the data, and actually developed, well, the data was evaluated over seven critical domains, which Steve will talk a little bit more about. And after a review of the research, a determination was made as to where the Town of Greenwich had already been successful in what we call age-friendly or dementia-friendly elements. So these are the elements that currently do exist, and where we felt some work needed to be done. So the Advisory Board also ensured that any course of action that was developed would be realistic and practical for the three-year timeframe. And finally, as more and more communities across the United States and around the world commit to becoming age-friendly, there is particular interest in simultaneously approaching the age and dementia-friendly component. We recognize that these two initiatives complement rather than compete with one another. And we did receive, as you all know, official notification in August that the Town of Greenwich had been accepted as a member of the Dementia-Friendly America Network. And we are the first in the state of Connecticut to be accepted into that network. So while there are many age-friendly communities across the country, it's important to recognize that there are merely a handful of communities in the United States that will ultimately be designated as both age and dementia-friendly, and Greenwich is one of those unique communities. Steve is going to give a little bit of a deeper dive into some of the data sources and actionable items in terms of the recommendations. You can see that the action plan includes not only our vision, the guiding principles, information about the certification process, demographics on a large scale, as well as local aging trends, information about each domain area of focus, and our recommendations, and the measures that are put into place to evaluate our impact and our results.
Good morning.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. So just to, just to talk a little bit more about what we did and the action plan in specifics, right? The approach that we, we took with this, you know, and I'm a data person, just like you, Sandy. The approach that we actually took with this is a tried and true approach that was started with the World Health Organization and AARP. They have a study, which we started out as our template, that they've used across America for a variety of different communities. We took that template, and then we kind of adjusted it to Greenwich. And we did that with the help of Bill Armbruster, who's the National Head of AARP Liveable Communities, who actually came to Greenwich now several times. The first time he came, I actually took him on a tour all around Greenwich. He saw every project in Greenwich, what we're about, all the different parts of Greenwich. So even before we did the survey, he got a very good sense of the town and gave us his feedback on the town. So it's very good with that. We then engaged the Columbia Mailman School of Public Health, their consulting group workshop to help us put the survey together. They actually looked at other surveys that were done in similarly situated towns such as Greenwich. We looked at Princeton. We looked at Great Neck, New York. We looked at Westchester County. We looked at New York City. We looked at Seattle. We looked at a bunch of different communities and helped formulate a, you know, a final study that we thought would be useful to the town, and you're cost-balanced and the things are, it's too long, no one finishes it, et cetera. We were hoping to get about 500 respondents back to have a valid survey. We got over 1,800, so that was actually very, you know, very good. And what the survey did was tell us what people's perceptions were of different items in the town and things that were important to them. So the next step with this was when we formed the advisory committee, and if you notice who's on the advisory committee, it's really a very large group. It's all the town departments, and really, a lot of the major town institutions that deal with older adults. Because the next part of this was to take what people's perceptions are and match them to what is reality, right? What do people actually know, right? And so my favorite example of that is, if someone said, gee, there's not enough park benches on Greenwich Avenue, and the Department of Works, you know, Department of Parks Recreation says, "Yes, we have X number of benches," and then, you know, the national study says, "You need this amount of benches on its place," then you know, does that match or not match? So we kind of tried to kind of true up what was real and what was just perceived, right? Some perceived items are sometimes helpful because we can, it's then a communications gap, right? So we did a kind of a gap analysis of what was done there. And that kind of formed the basis of the action plan, right? We took an approach with the action plan, and this was again on the, on the recommendation of Bill Armbruster, that for a town our size, right, because obviously, if you're in New York City, you have a certain amount of resources. And if you're in, you know, town in Texas with a, with a population of 200, you have different resources. For a town our size, he said, "You know what? You should have no more than three recommendations for each domain, and no more than three actionable items per recommendation." The reason being is because the purpose of this action plan is that you can accomplish 75 to 80% of what you propose to do in three years. It's supposed to be SMART goals, right? It's supposed to be specific, measurable, you know, attainable, reliable, and timely, right? So that's how we did the formulation of this action plan, based on that recommendation. We then went ahead and, you know, knowing the town as we kind of know it, we kind of tried to look at what's the low-hanging fruit, right? What are things that are not going to cost a lot of money, that is going to be, you know, difficult for the town to do? And we came up with the conclusion of the, of the action plan, what you see before us. What was really nice to find, and I think this is, should be in a testament to the Town of Greenwich, because people always say town departments don't speak to each other sometimes, and people don't always collaborate. We had tremendous collaboration. I mean, frankly, when Lori and I first started this, we were wondering, you know, are the town departments going to be helpful? How easy was it going to be? And I can say that, you know, there wasn't a single town department, not a single entity, that didn't both come on board and lend their expertise and become extraordinarily helpful and interactive as part of our advisory board. So I think that's, you know, that's to the credit of the town and something that really, people should really understand and know about. And from that, we came through the recommendations. A lot of these recommendations, and I'm not going to go through each one in detail unless you want me to go through specific ones, but part of these recommendations, you'll see some trends, right? Some things are information issues, right? There are a lot of things we learned that the town has, or the town is doing, that we didn't even know about, and we're kind of in the aging business, so to speak, in town. And so a lot of this has to do with how do we communicate this out to the public who may not know things such as there are certain town parts that were actually made to be age-friendly and age-walkable, right? So how do we communicate that? And so that's kind of one trend you'll see, that is like an awareness kind of trend through this, through the action plan. The other things had to do with, you know, how can we get different, different organizations in town to collaborate to produce different types of programs and things that people kind of sought in town? So, you know, that's another theme that you will think about. Just to conclude, and then, you know, if you have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them. This is meant to be, you know, as part of a constant process improvement exercise, right? So at the end, you know, we took the low-hanging fruit the first time around. And at the end of these, you know, the next three years, we would do another survey. And we would kind of keep repeating this process, you know, on and on, and that's kind of how it's supposed to be done. And what the survey gives is a benchmark from where we are today. In several years, we'll find out how well we did and where we are going forward, and we'll repeat the process going forward, but at least we have a baseline to compare it to. And so what, what we're seeking today is, is an approval of this action plan. Where it goes from here is to the AARP, and they have to approve the plan themselves. And once they approve the plan, then we, you know, we have to go ahead and actually execute the plan. Because it's wonderful to have a plan, but if you actually don't execute it, it doesn't really mean too much. And so that's what And so that's what we'll be working on over the next three years with different town partners, different members of the advisory board as we, you know, kind of want to get the designation to be age-friendly, which will happen at the end of the three-year period, provided that we can do about 75 to 80% of what's in the action plan.
Don't we have the designation now, or did I miss?
No, so we have, right, right now, right now, we have a designation as dementia-friendly, and we've been accepted into the network of age-friendly communities. But the official AARP, World Health Organization designation comes at the end of the three-year period when you can show that you've really done a substantial amount of an action plan, because that actually sees that you're doing what you say you can do and that the town's committed to do that.
I'm just curious, do any of the towns, as far as you know, any of the towns in Connecticut now have that designation?
No, we would be the first town to have that designation.
No one else is even in the process at this point?
There are towns that are at the beginning of the process, and frankly, we actually had a little, I don't know, a little group here from all the towns in Connecticut with Bill Armbruster. And I have to say, again, to the credit of Greenwich, a lot of people are having a lot of resistance getting different town departments in their town to work on it. We are, you know, significantly seven years ahead of the game of other towns in Connecticut.
That's my question. Okay, thank you.
I just have, sorry. Given the robust conversation we had, I think it's somewhat fortuitous that you were here for it, because on page 21, you talk about housing, and it is evident, you've had the communication with the Housing Authority, because you're, you're saying, we will encourage the development of affordable older adult housing units at Vincy Drive, that's already gained the MI from this board last year, I believe, encourage the development of affordable older units at Booth Court, that's MI1. And then the other talked about the development of additional older adult housing units as part of the development at Quarry, Null One. So I don't know if I really have a question, but it's evident that you're aware of their efforts. Obviously, you're seeing the deliberation about it in, in getting out broader understanding. What does that affordability mean? Because that's really, if I were to try to synthesize the, what was it, an hour and a half discussion? Population served was an underlying point, and I think Ms. Raymer made that clear. I mean, she talked specifically about low, low income. They're talking about what I perceive to be what you're referencing here. And then within that, what I think we were saying is, how many do we have now? What does that mean? There's so many gradations of it.
Well, so let me, let me, I'm going to say two, two different.
Not to get you mirrored in there.
No, 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 I don't want to get that very good.
But there is a correlation here, because them doing that helps you fulfill your.
Right, right. Well, but let me, let me, let me be very clear here, and, you know, I, we actually passed the sense of a meeting resolution on, on this issue, but I'll, I'll first, you know, be, one of the major components that came out of the survey was that we do not have enough older adult housing on all economic levels for a person to successfully age in place in the town of Greenwich. And if you want me to go into very details of what I mean by that, I'm happy to do so, but you should just know that this is not low, this is not moderate, this is not middle, this is not high. Not one of those areas is there enough housing for older adults. So the gap is tremendous at any one of the levels that you would want to talk about, right? We did pass a sense of the meeting resolution, and if you want, I think we submitted it to you.
You did.
I don't know if I need to, if you want, if I need to read it, but this is a significant issue that the town faces. People cannot age in, in town. And again, I can go in detail what that means, but that's really important to understand. Whether, and again, going back to these other things with the Housing Authority, whether the town ultimately feels that, you know, the Housing Authority should focus on low housing, moderate housing, the specifics of a project or what it is, that's, the town has a whole process to decide of how that should go, go forward. But if you're, say, you know, for our perspective, we want to encourage older adult housing on all levels within the town, because you have such a dearth of it and you have some significant issues. And frankly, that is why a lot of older adults are moving out of the town of Greenwich. And, you know, and I can tell you that firsthand, they're moving, they may move to Stanford, they may move. Once you think you cannot age in place in town, it's open where you can go. You can go to Florida, you can go to Stanford, you can go to Westchester, you can go anywhere.
Isn't, but isn't, isn't the emerging, I'm going to say emerging, because I only read about it recently, but the emerging trend to build mixed use, where you would have seniors close to family units, close to maybe low income? I mean, now I'm getting a little holistic in saying perhaps, you know, lower income are, are able to become employed to support older people who need assistance in their home. You know, I know finding people like that, I went through this, my, it's, it's a little bit of a challenge. So, so conceptually that.
I think that we've seen that, right, as a conceptual trend that's coming forward. What, what our focus is, if you look to page 14, and, yes, so let's start with page 14 of the action plan, the pie chart there, figure seven, how important is it to you remain in the town of Greenwich as you age? So this came directly from those 1,800 survey respondents. So you can see the very important and somewhat important overwhelmingly, 91%, right, very important for people to remain in community, so to either age in community or age in place. Figure eight shows us that how likely is it that you'll move to a different home outside of the town upon retirement? And, you know, kind of unsettling to us is also a very high percentage of individuals, what is that there, 69, also almost 70%, very likely and somewhat likely. And so a deeper dive into what are the potential reasons there? We feel that there is a need for housing, as Steve said, across all levels, so income levels, demographic levels, whatever it, you know, it may be. We advocate for right-size housing. So we recognize that if you're now a single person because your spouse has passed away and you live in a four-bedroom home, you want to stay in Greenwich, perhaps moving to a studio apartment really isn't feasible, but where do you go? Where are those in-between steps? And that, I believe, is, is also part of what we're advocating for.
I, I have two problems. Number one, I guess I'm going to put words in your mouth a little bit by saying, when you say we encourage the development of affordable older housing units at a particular place, at Booth Court in this case, you are not taking into account in that any of the points that were made here, whether about the environment or affordable housing, et cetera, mindful of your across-the-board thing. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Right.
Or are you saying, no, we've looked at it and we think Booth Court is the place you guys ought to sanction?
No, you don't have the expertise in environmental, you know, areas, issues or concerns. And so perhaps a language change is, could be as appropriate.
But I'll be honest with you, I, I think you can encourage housing there if it turns out there was an environmental issue there, right? And think about the action plan conceptually.
It's not feasible.
Conceptually, the action plan has a lot of different items that we're encouraging, right? Read through the action plan, and we're encouraging a ton of different items. Some of those items may become feasible, and some of those items may not be feasible, right? But you have to start somewhere, right? You have to start, you have to start with, if I just say, I want to encourage older adult housing in the town, but I have no real idea of who might be doing it, it's a really pointless recommendation to make, because what am I encouraging? I have no one who's there, right? No, no, I'm just saying.
I could quarrel with you. Whether you, whether you designate a particular place suggests that you have made a judgment, and, and I don't think you have.
I, I would say, I would say the way we kind of see it is, is that you have a community partner who says that this is what they're interested in doing, right? We encourage that, that's a good thing. If you say, if it says environmentally it doesn't work, planning zone it doesn't work, that's a town decision, that's okay, right? Right? But, but if, you know, and let me, if someone else came up in housing and said, you know, we want to build another facility, we would encourage, that's a good thing, but ultimately P&amp;Z may say, no, it's not going to work here, it's not going to work for this reason. But if we don't start with saying, you know, we're kind of want to encourage these things and have anyone specific that says, you know what, we're doing that, then frankly, we're not going to get off, off the block with housing. And housing is so significant in Greenwich, the older adult housing issue, that, you know, frankly, I think if we, if we kind of just kind of turn a blind eye on it, it's a problem. Even in the new POCD, you'll see older adult housing is all through the new POCD.
Again, in fairness to Sandy, because this was predates his time, but I come back to, because I did spend a lot of time with this, as I've been going through my files, I realized how quickly time went by, but all these action items, and it's replete in the action plans with things that you've actually done. So another point is, we talked about process, how long this all took from the task force that looked at the issue holistically, Mary Ellen Labine getting the change. But it does say, develop partnerships between and among social service agencies to expand age in place, you talk about that. Update the range of housing choices available, and these are things that you were targeted to do. Promote the use of elderly accessory apartments and review the building zone regs to provide more flexibility. That's in there, because you talked about maybe a studio. So all I'm trying to say is, we're all, we're all in the right place, it's perspective. This is what was proposed back then, it's been worked toward, but now we're at almost the, the next plan, which is going to build off this and maybe change direction. You know, I'm not, I'm saying, I'm not quarreling, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm just saying it's perspective on.
I'm, I'm the, no, I'm one of two people on this board that's the beneficiary of this plan he's talking about, so I'm not mocking it. I'm not, I'm not mocking it.
Don't cheat me, don't cheat me.
Yeah, no, no.
It starts at 55.
You're not there yet. So, but the other, the other thing, and this goes back to something we've talked about both publicly and privately, and you're making the point, Steve, which I fully understand, that this goes across economic levels in town. You're saying all kinds of housing, whether it's low, moderate, quote, affordable, whatever that means. It comes back to another point, which is slightly off the mark, but I'll make it anyway, which is, we really, and I'm sure you have, tried to get data to talk about what is the breakdown? We have X number of senior citizens in this town. How many are in need of low income? How many are in need, however defined, by, of, of moderate income housing? How many can afford whatever? So, so that, if you're doing this, you're targeting the right needs. In other words, because your universe has obviously different needs, or when I say needs, I mean capabilities is probably the better word. So we really ought to, I know you're trying, but we really ought to get the data that enables you to focus.
You've been consistent, you've been consistent on this, because this comes back to, I think, when we did the.
The tax credit.
Yes, yes, you've been consistent, and I don't speak, but I know.
Well, Lori knows I bring it up at every turn.
It's hard, it's hard, I mean, to get.
I know it is, I know it is.
But let me just, let me just, let me address the data question, right?
So if you look at what, what is, what is our role on this, right? We know that you need senior older adult housing now, because I can tell you, I can tell you right now, right? This is what's been the major shift, right? It used to be years ago, right, in the late 1960s, retire at 65, your power passways 71, 72, probably a, you know, stroke, heart attack, cancer, right? You won't be living very much longer, one or two years, and you're done.
What do I picture you painting?
And by the way, and there's actual data on that, I'm happy to give you that.
I don't want to see it.
Today, you are fortunate, because you, you know, your average life expectancy is now between, you know, if you're a woman, probably 80, 40, 50, if you're a man, not so lucky, maybe 82, 83. And you're going to probably live with, you know, anywhere from five to seven years with chronic conditions, in need of some sort of assistance and help, right? And if you have a high quality of life with that, the issue that, that we used to do, right, that, 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 know, it's, you 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 know, it's, you